Recording in progress.
Hello, Chief Shannon's ready. We're officially from the April 4th meeting of the Mount Vernon City Council called to order and told that that program will not be any more reform than Laura is going to be with us in the morning. First item on agenda is any agenda addition or approval of agenda? Anything? Yeah?
I do approve of the agendas presented.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I will start.
Thank you, Steph. During the oral motion of approving the agenda, all other motions say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. In communications, first part of the communications agenda, is any unscheduled speakers? Anybody here in the public, can you speak to any particular topic? Thank you, Captain.
Hello, Mark, everyone. Close training, it's great to see there's a lot of folks here. So, thanks for letting me speak. Numerous items are coming up and I guess when it comes to everything, it's always, you know, I want to see, you know, a good, open process and good discussions that typically happen when it comes to these. I'm doing, you know, it's sometimes I do have questions about it. Also, we have one instance, you know, we have three people standing up here for, you know, to be appointed to the council. I didn't see that by being as open as they were. I thought, you know, we were three people. I just got to spoke, we spoke about basic things, not really many questions were asked and then, you know, there was no discussion afterwards. So to me, that didn't seem very open. And then that motion was made by, you know, to appoint by a member who really has never spoken, you know, to everyone, I can say that for a fact, had never really spoken or got to know or even spoken to one of the components, but that was to me, the motion to point. So, I can't say that I saw that as being open. But that being said, hopefully, the community can see that we're going to have the open discussions being made with these upcoming plans. So to me, what I'm seeing is Dr. Bailey Morris spoke last week, as I've seen his five-year, 10-year, 15-year plans. Having to see any plans like that, perhaps I've missed those meetings, yes, if we have ones in place and it's a, you know, school or city council working completely differently. Let's see here. So, he pretty much goes along with his line. As great plan in that plan, he mentioned the Mount Vernon schools in his vision. He said that he saw that schools being the hub of Mount Vernon. I'm not quite one hundred percent sure what he meant by that, but I'm thinking it's hub, you know, you have your hub and then everything goes away from that, different spokes. So just kind of wondering, what you guys, because, and we have the discussion, you know, individually, you think, and then if you want, you know, if we all speak as, you know, we all speak as a council, just what do you think? Because the world's going to be different, obviously, the world 10, different 20 years ago than it is today, going to be way different in 20 years. Where are we going? It'd be nice for the community to just see a plan. You know, at least that we do have a plan of some sort. Just basically that. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Anybody else in the public? Can you speak to any topics not on the agenda? Bring them, I think, we'll then go to item two, the Resilient Item Communities introduction. And who wants to start with that? Want to talk one, or Laura, or?
I think Cassie is from RIC.
Oh, okay, she's here. Oh, and there she is, right? You have audio?
Yes, thank you, hello, everyone. Tom, thank you for allowing me to speak here. I have just a brief presentation to go through. Laura, do you have the slides that you want me just to speak?
Uh, yeah. Doug, were you able to?
Yeah, I can share the screen.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Perfect. So, yes, I am the Program Manager of NEDC, University of Northern Iowa. My name is Cassandra Sani and this year I have the privilege of being, last year, 2021, I was hired in September to help launch the Resilient Item Communities Program. And I'm very excited that Mount Vernon has decided to join it and that's such a wonderful pilot community already. So I just wanted to give a little background about the Resilient Item Communities Program and how it works, just so everyone's on the same page and fully informed. Can you go to the next slide? Right, so this was actually a brainchild of 1,000 Friends of Iowa, the nonprofit, and the University of Northern Iowa Center for Energy and Environmental Education, also called the CEE, because the full name is a bit of a mouthful. And that's where I am seated. So that, I was a staff member who was hired to run the project in 2021. I served as part of Green Iowa AmeriCorps staff previously with the University of Northern Iowa. So I've been looking through this project around the start of 2021 and had an idea of kind of the start of the vision of what we wanted to see with this program. And I was joined by a wonderful advisory council and they've run a lot of different areas of expertise together. So we have staff from cities and counties, nonprofit groups like the Iowa Environmental Council, 1,000 Friends of Iowa, the Iowa Development Authority, Energy Center, Des Moines Area, NPO, et cetera. So this really provided a bright baseline for determining best practices and bringing together all these areas of expertise to put together this program. So we're currently still in the process of recruiting communities. We've got Fairfield, La Cora, Johnston, Independence, and of course, Mount Vernon so far. And we hopefully have kind of delayed things a little bit before we're on the officially launched, the 2022 is officially the pilot year launch date. And if you just want to go to the next slide so I can talk about who participates. Yep, thank you. So we're looking for community partners of all kinds. So first off, we want a diverse range of cities. We didn't want to be just big cities or just cities that have a lot of familiar sustainability. We want this to be a program that is useful to everyone and reach all kinds of communities. Through that, we're hoping to first develop knowledge shares and link together cities. If one city has done, you know, something that says Mount Vernon is very interested in, you know, they can connect with that city, look at the documents they have, look at how they thought the policy, and that makes it easier for the community to put together that policy and put it into practice. So you don't have to start, you know, basically from the beginning by yourselves. Of course, there's connection with outside resources as well. So this would be something like maybe a nonprofit or the Iowa Environmental Council has, you know, a student intern or something like this, it can assist with work or any other kind of connections through the Bureau of Council, different organizations, whether it's, you know, the Iowa DNR or, you know, the Des Moines Area NPO, et cetera. And then of course, we'll also utilize existing resources at the CEE. So that's the Green Iowa AmeriCorps Program, which has members located all around the state. We have a center focused, our harbor center is focused on pollution prevention and we also have part of the program that's centered on food and food systems. So we have some in-house expertise. I also work on greenhouse gas inventories. So we have kind of a broad range already within our center of ways we can help. And then of course, we continue to provide links to other outside resources for the cities and the RIC program as well. And I'd really like to say that the RIC program is about combining guidance with flexibility. So on the one hand, we didn't want to make it so strict that communities were really hamstrung and they didn't have the opportunity to pursue what they wanted to pursue, what was best for their city. And on the other hand, of course, we don't want to make it so that cities are kind of floundering around on their own, because what would be the point of the program then? So we have a million options across different categories and that really allows cities to work on projects that best suit their needs, because it's not a one-size-fits-all program. We recognize diversity in unique circumstances of every community that joins. So our best practice categories are broken down into five primary categories. The first is buildings and lighting. The second is land use. The third is transportation. The fourth is environmental management. And the fifth and final one is community and economic development. And each category offers six best practices and communities only have to complete one for bronze tier or two for silver tier per category. Not, they've not even completed all six of the best practices, we had some confusion there before. We're not asking cities to take out 30 best practices all at once, just one or two per category. This also depends on whether a community has already completed some of the best practices. You get credit for anything you've already done and you get recognition for that. So if you already done one of those one practice per category, you pick up another one per category, you'll finish two, there's your silver recognition already. And through that pilot year, we hope to learn which actions are most useful to communities, whether they need to be adjusted or changed and reach out to communities with ideas for new best practices, because we know despite the expertise of our advisory council, we can't know everything. And so we want to hear from the cities themselves if they're trying really, you know, important project out, we want to include that and support that in the future. And finally, the last thing I'll talk about is the city commitments. So we have a couple of orders available that can be sent out to anyone who's interested. The program is free to join and there's no commitment to spending money. You, the CEE will do its best to connect any community that's interested with grants to support the project, but we do not have the cities committing to spend any money to join or to participate. Of course, we want cities to select the best practices most suited to them and what's most useful for them and what their citizens most desire. The other part, the other two requirements are to appoint a coordinator who worked with the RIC Program Manager on communication documentation, so in Mount Vernon, that's Laura, and provide official feedback at least once a year on Congress made courses to select the best practices and also give any thoughts and use of changes to the program. Again, this is the pilot year, so we'll be working with cities to see kind of what checked-in times were best and how to structure that as best as possible. And of course, being all cities, you see recognition for the best practices completed. That's really one of the big points of this is to celebrate sustainability wins for all cities to get them and to put positive momentum and energy into sustainability efforts. So once again, thank you so much to Mount Vernon for joining this program. I'm really excited. And now I will turn it over to Tam to talk a little bit about the context of this program within Lynn County.
Thank you, Cassie and Laura, for all of the work that you've done so far on this pilot year for Mount Vernon. And thank you to the council for being supportive of this work. I'm Tam Marcus, I'm meeting some of you for the first time, so it's great to meet you. I'm Mellicorn, Sustainability Manager, and I just am really here to look forward to Cassie and Laura and just to let all of you guys know that as we're kind of working through this process, we will have a local counter for Lynn County Sustainability and the support of that office behind this work. And I think, you know, I just want to applaud you guys honestly for the steps that you've taken so far. I think it's really telling and significant that the first pilot community in Lynn County is not Cedar Rapids, it's not, is not Marion, but it's not Vernon, right? So thank you for taking that commitment. And also, you know, I think sometimes this work can be a little scary because you're kind of thinking about how it's a different part of your doing. I will say, Cassie mentioned the resources that CEE is identifying for pilot communities. They presented me with a million dollar grant for this work, right? And so there is funding available for a lot of these actions if we choose to take it. And I think this is just the beginning of this partnership. And I think we're able, we will be able to do some really cool things in Mount Vernon and also demonstrate to the rest of Lynn County that sustainability is possible at all levels. So, again, we just wanted to uplift the work of you guys and let you guys know that as we're continuing this process, I do have that local counter here in addition to the resources at CEE. So, thank you.
The process started probably about six months ago when I was invited to meet with Emma and other children with Green Iowa AmeriCorps in Cedar Rapids. First introduced me to this project and it was kind of put on hold just because of my transition, that was the only reason that Mount Vernon held back on that. Thanks to Laura for taking, being a part of this city of this. And Laura, you want to talk a little bit about your first cut, the audit, if you will? You have it by any chance?
Sorry, what was that, Tom?
Do you have, do you have any chance have, you know, talk about the first cut you took of the audit, if you will, of the point system?
Oh, the checklist?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Well, I just went through and tried to fill out the Resilient Item Communities Best Practice Checklist, the best that I could from the resources that I had within the comprehensive plan that we have and just knowing what the community's already done in sustainability. So all in all, I think we had, let me see here, 66 points out of 135. I'll double check that.
Yes.
Yep, yep, okay, 66 points out of 130, excuse me. So, you know, some places that, within this checklist, that we were lacking were transportation, which is kind of inevitable in a city of our size. So I feel like I'm not too worried there. There were a few others, you know, we did actually pretty well in, I feel like land use and environmental management, as well as the community and economic development. I'm still working with RIC to finish out the checklist to make sure that I get them all the examples that I need for, for the future use of this checklist. And, yeah, I think we're, we're working through it and I guess if there's any questions about specific parts within that checklist, we can go over it too. But I think this kind of introduction to this program, I know it'll welcome them back at a future city council meeting and discuss more opportunities of what our best practices could be. So that's, that's just the general overview of this.
That sounds good. Thank you very much, Laura, for many levels here. Staff, who's got a question?
Yeah, I've got a question. Um, I can see the scorecard, obviously, this is really helpful and it's really detailed, which I think is great. I'm just curious to know, you know, what, did you have any takeaways regarding recommendations for us on either A, items that you saw as quote-unquote low-hanging group that we could ju, you know, address quickly and easily? Or are there other things that you think that should be, you know, based on the scores here, more emphasis and priority on?
Yeah, so I think right now, we're still in a very preliminary stage, I don't want to say preliminary, but we're still trying to work through that. That's actually our next step with RIC and with Cassie and Tam and everyone else, Eva who's been helping. We'll try to figure out some of those, I guess, feasible best practices that we can get done and we'll try to do as many as we can, I think. But that's kind of going to be our next step and then we'll bring it back to city council and see maybe what best practices you guys would want to focus on in each category.
Okay, thank you. As a community that relies on outside entities for many of our jobs, transportation won't be the trickiest category that we're going to be able to face. Those that we're already doing well in do have some knowing and primitive that we can take on. Building and energy, I'm anxious to have those conversations just from a standpoint of what that does to various costs. Yeah, it should be kind of a mix, but yeah, transportation is going to be our problem kind of, as you can imagine.
To make decisions based on the recommendations you asked about, we needed, I think, a baseline. So I was pleasantly surprised I were, we did pretty well, but there's always some other areas that we've been, incredible yet. And again, it's one more thing to make Mount Vernon, to create the distinction of Mount Vernon. I mean, L, Laura, B, B City USA, True City USA, I mean, it's one more thing to add that distinguishes us from other small, small communities. So, thanks for the report and presentation by Cassie and thanks for Laura for her moment. And Emma, thanks for you showing up for this meeting and speaking to us. I, it's good to have you here. Any else on the Resilient Item Communities at this point? There should be more and I think the country may ask if you could just have space with Tam around at some point or vice versa to, I think there's a next step of this. This is a story here on the local paper. If we're ready to move on to consent agenda, we've got three items with a possibility to alert the businesses. Everybody have a chance to review those? So motion to approve that. Thank you, Paul, your second?
Second.
Thank you. Moving second to approve the consent agenda, all the papers, please say aye? Aye. Opposed? Which carries. You'll be on the mayor proclamation. Proclamation, revising, pointing to do a sexual assault awareness month at the City of Mount Vernon, Iowa. I think we've got a couple of speakers that want to come up and talk about that. Please introduce yourself and your organization and then that proclamation.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Emily Parker. I'm Iowa Association of Urban Director for Review Center. And mine is Alex Nugent, and I am a sexual assault therapist. So Review Center serves Mount Vernon communities specifically for survivors of sexual violence. This could be historical trauma from 20 years ago or very recent trauma 20 minutes ago. We work with survivors of sexual violence in a spectrum area. So that can be everything from workplace sexual harassment, supporting local businesses and writing sexual harassment workplace policy, to child and sexual abuse, whether that's historical or recent, to recent sexual assault or circumstances that happen on our campuses. That, one of the things that's very unique to Mount Vernon is that we do hold office hours on Cornell's campus to ensure that our students have access to our services. Everything that we do at Review Center is entirely free and confidential. That includes therapy that Alex provides. We recognize, and as somebody that lives in a very small community, myself live in a tiny town of 850 people, is that transportation access can cause some barriers. And so what's unique to us is that we travel to meet survivors and their families that makes them feel the most safe, so that we will come in here. You may have not heard about Review Center until today, or you may not hear about us often, and that's because we are truly confidential until you need us. We're very much prevalent, peace in your life. And we've done everything from supporting getting access to housing, food and securities, processing through trauma, things of that nature. And we recently just accepted a $575,000 grant, our first federal grant that provides transitional housing to survivors and their families. This really allows us for the survivor to move into the communities that make them feel safe, especially with the prevalence of sex trafficking going on. This will be dynamic in addressing some of those issues. We can pay for rent for six months up to a maximum of two years. So if you think about that, having to pay your rent, what a significant impact that can make on somebody's life. And we also recognize, especially for small communities, smaller communities, is that, you know, veterans' business, global, right? And we all have survivors within our life, whether we recognize it or not. And I'll have Alex share a little bit about what she knows.
Hello, my name is Alex Nugent. Thank you guys again for allowing us to speak here today. I enjoy working for Review Center because the agency provides the very confidential services. If you're somebody who has struggled with mental health, accessing therapy can be very difficult due to our, um, mental health issues, I'll manage this, I'll have the words. Due to our healthcare system, thank you. And so the fact that we're free, we don't have limitations from the amount of services that we can provide. So if somebody needs up to three times a week or once a week, or maybe they decide, I don't really need it now, I might need it next week or maybe in a month, that's all up to our survivors. My day-to-day is very different due to the flexibility of our agency. Healing from trauma is such an individual thing and an individual process. At Review, I'm able to offer anything from play therapy all the way up to psychoeducation for a seven-year-old woman. Review Center allows me to travel, as Emily said, and offer services not only at the schools, but also in home with some of our survivors, maybe where they feel most comfortable. I just want to begin with a few facts. One in six men are affected by sexual assault and one in four women are affected by sexual assault. Thank you again for letting us speak here today and we look forward to working and partnering with you in the future.
Thank you, uh, sitting in for supporting this proclamation and recognizing that sexual violence does occur and that Sexual Assault Awareness Month is our biggest one. We're very busy, but it's such an important issue in terms of violence prevention. So, thank you. You guys, someone's in our hosting, Michelle Knight? We are. So on April 29th, 5:00 PM, I'll be speaking in downtown Cedar Rapids. We are hosting Michelle Knight, who escaped after 11 years of captivity in Cleveland, Ohio. So she'll share her story and her story of hope and resilience. She's written a lot of novels and if you're a podcaster myself, she's been on some good podcasts where they've talked about her story. All proceeds are going to benefit our organization and aid us in continuing to provide medical coats for families, new mattresses after those that have been taken, new clothes after they've experienced a sexual assault and they're removed for evidence for law enforcement. So definitely feel free to come. You can find, you can purchase tickets at reviewcenter.org and you can help us eat some good dinner, bid on some silent action items and definitely enjoy your partner meeting with the chief over here. And I can't say enough positive things about working with law enforcement in Mount Vernon. So, thanks for waiting.
Thank you.
Yes, questions, Emily and Alex? Pretty no other questions. I think traditionally, we read proclamations in two minutes, so I'll go through this proclamation. Whereas, sexual assault affects people of all backgrounds, from age, race, cultural background, gender identity, sexual orientation, economic status, level of physical or cognitive abilities. And whereas, in addition to the immediate physical and emotional costs, sexual assault may also have associated consequences of post-traumatic stress disorder, substance abuse, depression, homelessness, eating disorders, suicide. And whereas, sexual assault can be devastating not only to the survivor, but also for the family, friends and community of the survivor. And whereas, since no one person, organization, agency or community can eliminate sexual assault in their home, we must work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent sexual assault, support survivors and their significant others, and support those agencies providing services to survivors. Now therefore, we at the City Council of Mount Vernon and on behalf of all staff and citizens of Lynn County, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as Sexual Awareness, Sexual Assault Awareness Month. In the City of Mount Vernon, in Lynn County, Iowa, encourage all citizens to learn more about preventing sexual abuse. And this is a witness thereof. We have set our hand, cause of great seal that comes to be fixed this day, and I will sign this. Anything else we need to do? Procedure will be first? You're done. So, thank you for coming and sharing your story with us. And I've mentioned several times that we are, you know, are confined sometimes, end at the city limits of Mount Vernon, but we are citizens of a bigger society and we need to engage in this appropriate area to be engaged. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, guys.
I have an old business, we had table an item that, at this point, the schools are not ready to provide the information that we had, that we needed from the last meeting. So we're tabling it again. Is that, or do you want us to?
So it's just going to stay table?
Stay table, okay.
The photometric map from Musco Lighting has not yet been provided. We have received some basic design layouts of secondary access, future secondary access to the campus, which we're reviewing right now. So they, they have bullet points that they've met. Couple of the big ones, obviously, especially with lighting, remain for us to be able to review. Since then, I see Laurie is on the call, you've received an email from Lori Cranston regarding traffic in Stone Brook. I do want to assure everybody that, that the individual lot that was designated in Stone Brook to the city, actually given to the city, is only wide and unrelatively framed in its purposes, it wouldn't be conducive to trying to put any access points out. The site plan does call out and file intent purposes by the layout would only allow for emergency service access. Staff is not going to recommend to council that we install permanent no parking signs within Stone Brook until we have a better idea of the number of events that could occur. So we're going to propose to you that we handle it similar to what we handled with Cornell and that we do temporary no parking, trying to disrupt the lives of those in Stone Brook, where we, we know that people are going to park, probably Mount Vernon residents will choose to park there versus those that are visiting. But we're going to kind of ease into that a little bit before we place a lot of permanent signs and try to disrupt everyday life over there, especially when we're talking potentially about, you know, a dozen or less, probably the events throughout the year. So, it's going to stay table, so you can't really discuss, because there was some tidbits that I've given you tonight. If Laurie would like to, if she's on tonight, would like to make any comments, I just want Laurie to understand that they will have, you won't have back and forth feedback, so if we can, if you want to, Laurie, you can attend in the next meeting as well. I know the school will be back. I know the school will be back.
Lori, do you have anything to provide?
No, I don't have any comments.
Thank you for hearing our order this week.
Yes, my views. Sorry, if somebody wanted to speak tonight on that, it's table, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes. Yes. But, and to respond to your next question, I think the intent is very much to get it addressed on the next meeting.
Okay.
So, that's the story of that. Let me add.
So can I do the same thing as Lori has done?
You can make comment, we just can't, we can't go back and forth, but you have the odd guy.
That's fine, I didn't expect that.
Jeff, you want to step up that mic then?
You yourself and David Adams.
David Adams.
Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to have this opportunity to talk to you folks. My name is Mark North. I live at 62013 Avenue Southwest, one of the properties that's adjacent to this project. And I just, why don't you bring to the council five of my concerns? Parking, transportation, parking, traffic, which Lori has already brought up, and was brought up last week by one of the, I believe I was Stephanie. Lighting, sound, trash, and the fifth one was the effect on property value resale. So I'm gonna just get away from the parking, because that's what we discussed lighting. It was nice to read in the paper that Mr. Hoff finally recognized the fact that even though these aren't really the focusable lights, as they stated in our early meetings, there will be glare. I've been in the vending management business for 45 years, and yeah, his comments back in September of 20 were pretty negative. Sound, there is a sound work with the city of Mount Vernon from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. It's 60 decibels on the DBA scale. From 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, it's 55 DBA. And one of the issues with the DBA scale is it does not take into consideration some of the low frequency sound waves. And if you're ever been next to a car that's got a big race cap that's sitting in the trunk, you're gonna have to be fumping, the DBA scale doesn't pick that up. So, you know, the PA for the scoreboard, band practices, early morning physical training exercises that they do with boom boxes booming towards the tennis courts that we can hear, all asking to be affecting, you know, the immediate neighborhood. Trash, after any of the events at the high school, you'll find fast food bags, wrappers, cups, they're just laying all over the place. There's never any effort to go pick those things up. They just stay there, stay there, stay there. So you're gonna put a football stadium in, have more people, capacity of 1,750 people. So, and trash will become an issue. And it's going back to the number of events, this is popping in my head, you know, as mentioned, there's going to be 10 to 15 events. So you have the band practices in the early mornings, you have the band practices in the evenings, you've got early morning track practices that are occurring in the dark right now. Soccer games will always tend to be pushed back later than, you know, late afternoon will be pushed in the evening because of lights. So, you know, I think the 10 to 15 events is just gonna be really understated on what actually happens in that practice field, because they did give us a schedule back in September, and it was pages long.
I want to clarify that. I was only referring to traffic as far as mass parking in Stone Brook. The expectation is those large events would be the ones that we are concerned most about in the city, but knowing full well that yes, there is going to be a lot more that occurs in that facility than just those events.
But the lighting and the sound is gonna be impacted by all those extra.
I just wanted to clarify, I'm referring currently to.
Okay, that's good. And then the last thing is just the resale of the property that is addiction to that. You know, we asked the school, the school district, you know, if they had any thoughts on that, did they go out and talk to a realtor? And if you're immediately adjacent with this project, the realtor stated that the value of product would be in the negative range of what the number would be. So I think those are all important considerations. I think for the most part, those of us that lived there probably have no illusions that we can stop this. I don't think that's, you know, the issue here. I just think that this thing was moving forward at a point, and got to a point before it, I think, was brought to residents who don't have children in the school district, and you know, being told, well, it's been on the website for five years, you know, really doesn't cover it. So with that, I just wanted to say thank you, and good luck with this debate.
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Moving on to motion approval, first item is consideration of claims last week. We have a testimony last afternoon.
Yeah, it doesn't die.
Did you have a chance to play that?
I have just one quick question. There are a series of, I mean, not sufficient funds checks for the water department?
I saw that too.
Were those us writing? It's not us writing. We don't, okay. All right. Okay. The $700 one, I'm actually, but okay, gotcha. I just was curious. Okay, having said that, I would approve of the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you.
No, not the consent agenda, the.
Please. Before you vote on this motion, please note that there will be a rather large plan that goes to WOSSI for typically fees that occurred during the derecho. Illness within administration and macro balance is $19,000. That check likely go out before your next meeting. Just wanted to give you the heads up. All the tickets I have and so on, but I just wanted to let you know that are a lot in between.
We've got a motion from Scott, sir.
I'll second.
Second. Thanks for your clarification, Chris. For the vote, all favor the motion to approve claims list, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Who cares? I can choose a placeholder with regard to COVID event additions policies. Anybody have anything to add to this?
It's a table two worlds. China dealing with another outbreak in the 52314 area code has been zero for like a week now.
I would like to recommend that we remove this as an agenda item. Just, we've been in a fairly good state for a while now, and at any point that it needs to come back, I think we could add, break it back. But right now, it's a placeholder for good news.
You think that is a motion? Is there a second? I'll second that. You're correct. Move the second today for the discussion. It was Paul Benjamin. You want us to bring him out? I don't know. Captain.
I, well, no, I don't, I mean, I'm not opposed or friendly favorite woman, I don't care. Setting the agenda isn't really a, I mean, if we're gonna remove it from this one, if you want backing on us doing it, I'd see where, you know.
I think that's what I'm asking.
I'm not really completing a sentence, but do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, but the mayor sets the agenda, but if he wants us.
We're out for the support in, right. I got you.
So I'll make sure it's in the back too. Set a tier of support.
Yeah, okay.
We've got a motion to second to move it onto future agendas until time of our break. Are you all for that motion? All favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? What carries? And three, discussion consideration of areas of state firework permits, CDG.
Stick your fingers in it.
Was there a total on here?
I had a total of 6,400, Scott. I had to add up the pages.
Okay, I wasn't taking crazy calls. There was no.
No, the last two pages, if you add up the integrity of the size of fireworks.
We contribute 5,000. The city contributes 5,000 in here, here to state fireworks. But yeah, it's usually around 6,000.
Okay.
Again, we didn't, we didn't have it last year, so.
One note, it's on Friday, typically it's on Thursday. Yep, has to happen, so just keep that in mind.
That's a change with the CDG.
Yeah, no, I don't, you know, people showing up on Thursday, I mean, with the golf balls flying. Having said that, I would approve of the fireworks permit for here in state of 2022.
Second.
I'll second.
So we go fireworks. For a minute, I thought you seconded it.
I'm moving on to the student pool consultant.
First, Emily, thank you for seconding that motion for the here to state firework permit. If we're reading all of that, all favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Now we're on the pool consultant contract approval. Actions needed.
So council's already given us a go ahead to move forward. Water Edge, this is their actual contract, and the dollar amounts estimated to get us through this entire process is 49,000. And, I don't know, yeah. If you go to page 10 on Water Edge, the middle, it is the project manager is Lauren Hawthorne. That's kind of per sheet. I just want to say that, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the group, but for me, she is the difference maker in this entire thing. She was the project lead on the presentations, and her ability to walk us through this process is what really kind of tipped the hat towards Water Edge, and I would agree. So excited to get this project underway and put together or put to bed in another longstanding conversation point of the community.
But I just note that on page 12, we have Matt Stewart, who I'm sure as a youth swam in the current pool. And I think that anytime you can have a local factor into some of what's going on and have that, you know, historical memory and idea of what this community is, I think is a benefit. And I was glad to see we were fortunate to have someone with that type of experience.
Well, and both he and Justin from OPM were the leads on the LBC, and so having that institutional knowledge is valuable as well.
Some of us worked in a consulting firm for 26 years, have seen a lot of reports and RFPs and so on, and it looks really long, this is a really strong, you guys mentioned that two weeks ago, quite far away. And I would make a motion to approve this. Second, you correct, and all. Further discussion?
I'm just curious, Chris, maybe I missed the, missed it here, but what can you tell us about the timeline?
It's a year.
It's a year, it's.
Okay.
Give or take. So there's, there's, I think.
That's somewhere here, yeah.
Normally, you would, you'd want to push something like this through in anywhere from six to nine months. However, we are having them look at three various options.
There is, I don't know.
So.
Three months.
Yes. So the expectation is this will take an entire year, because we give them a look at one facility indoor and then outdoor, and they're kind of a three category, so.
There it is, with a game chart right there. They did a good job on that, too.
The losing game chart starts in April of 2022.
Yeah.
It's, we're hit. Any other questions to the discussion? The motion for approved, Water Edge, the contract we've got here, as our pool consultants, all favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Page five, discussion consideration of Chalk Walk Street closure request.
We kind of, staff that kind of discussed this, we typically haven't, because partially the city, we haven't really brought the street code or your request to council before, but hopefully trying to be more transparent and letting everybody know what's going on, we would have a council vote on the actual street code closure for the event. And then the chalk purchases is actually within purchasing, but I just wanted to give you the heads up, the cost to go a little bit, expect to spend slightly under 4,000. And again, as a pass through, we turn around and resell.
And the closure goes from Friday evening to like Sunday late afternoon evening, right?
We typically try to wait until 4:35 o'clock on Friday to close the street off, and then Sunday weather, depending if it's really nice, we pull off as long as possible.
My reporter checked us on the time, it would be 4:35 and not 6:00. Oh, well, I mean, it's 5 o'clock, 4:30?
We try not to go any earlier than 5 o'clock, so we try to let the bank get their business done. So, and.
Thank you.
We try to leave everything open on their own business.
Do you need a motion?
Is this a joint one, or is this?
Two separate motions.
That's the best first one. Stephanie?
I would move that we, to approve the big street closure on Friday, May 6, 2022, through the Chalk Walk weekend.
For a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. A further discussion of questions? For the vote, all favor of the motion of street closure, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Now for the Chalk Walk purchase.
Also gladly make the motion for the purchase of the chalk, not to exceed $4,000 for Chalk Walk.
Not to exceed four? Okay, thank you.
I'll second that one, Scott.
Can I jam up this Wes and Al this year, or last year, Rob? Any questions of Matt or Chris on that Chalk Walk? Chalk purchase? All favor of the chalk purchase for Chalk Walk Weekend, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Page seven, we have a special venue event, the Morning Run 5K event, scheduled for July 25th, 60. Council actions needed.
So the whole process gets slightly convoluted. This happened to us with our outdoor seating as well. Unfortunately, the state won't sign off on Lynn Mar and liquor license without the city council okay with the event. Normally, we wait until they issue us a certificate stating that they've done their due diligence, and then they need the city council to sign off on it. So we're going backwards, and we've done this process once before. Essentially, they're going to extend their outdoor seating here, going through the proper procedures to get the state liquor license to extend as well. The state is asking if we're okay with the event general first. First, first. Correct. Anybody else to add?
Do you want, do you want me to add?
If you have, come on this truck.
I didn't have any questions, Chris started talking, so now I've got some questions.
Can you guys, I'm in a, I own the Lynn Mar Run, the local downtown Mount Vernon. I have been working with Chris and teaching since June, where I'm trying to run the line Run 5K to Mount Vernon. So it's ran by an organization that puts on 5Ks. So they do all the planning, I'm the host, but we are in town, so I needed the route to be on city streets. And then for the safety of the participants, I would like the parking lot to be to the north of our line patio, where that patio would be blocked off from Friday, July 15th, around 3:00 o'clock, through probably noon, July 16th.
Is that, I apologize, is that what you're talking about with expanding the line earlier?
Yes.
Okay, I thought, I'm looking at this map and there's only dots. I thought it is. Chalk running line.
We're going to break down the road.
My questions are answered. I know, I know, but I was like, well, that's pretty close.
So that is the route. We were trying to make this as easy and seamless as possible by not going on First Street, so businesses can stay open and not crossing Highway 1. So we are on the Northwest quadrant. So I was trying to highlight some of the cool features, Davis Park, Cornell, so that because it should be a tourism type event, we'll have a lot of people from outside Mount Vernon joining. It's not a competitive, we're just, maybe there's a little glass of wine upon completion. So for the safety, for pack and pickup Friday night, I was planning on my music in that lot, so use, fully use it, but there is like seven parking spots back there. But for the safety of them starting and finishing, I would like that, but I needed permission that it would be blocked off by the city blockades to make it safe.
Have you already talked to your neighbors? Because obviously it's gonna spill over if there's a problem.
No, in that, talk to my neighbors.
That's the only question I had, my block. That's the only question I had. My block of the parking lot there, uh, and using that as a packet pickup and so on. So that's, you'll need to deal with, I guess.
Um, I, we don't, we're, we're not treating this event any differently than we do on Main Street. So this is the public process and then assuming that there'll be an article in the paper. Uh, there'll be signs that are placed out there and things vacate by certain dates and, um, whether they like it or not, the individuals that, uh, make notes on their home have come to at least be aware of our festival system. So.
So, and, yeah, I, I'd just like to address, um, Greg, in that, um, the fact that they're purposely staying off of First Street and not only paying that part, which occurs for a number of events and the fact that it's a, an event that draws people into the community. It's, it's not focused on just the local community, um, by the local. Um, I think that is a, a major factor in supporting this type of event. And frankly, if any of the other businesses and neighbors in that area have an interest in an event that takes up that space for a day or a day and a half, I think economically it's the right thing to do. Now, I will also say, Anna, that anytime someone makes me run, I whine. So.
You, you don't.
Don't expect me to run, to be running. Expect me to be whining. I, I would move approval.
I was gonna say, my only question is run, walk? Is that the, okay.
Yeah, the walk is more encouraged than the run.
Sure.
It's more of a social event to highlight a community or most times it's on private property, but I saw it as an opportunity to showcase the whole community. Um, and then we, anyway, I will be marketing it and building up the other businesses like I usually do as much as I can. The only change might be, I think we're going to start, which is a minor detail, but it's, um, to just, if we block it off, there's one alley that goes between us and Vigs and Liberty Iron Works. I'd like them to start and stop there. So we'll probably start right in front of Gail's building, starting in there. And then they can walk up and then safely be in the alley and then hopefully go spend money on the street.
And I assume law enforcement is.
Give me Mike, can I hear? Yeah, we've, she's been great with working with us and bringing everything way ahead of time that we usually get. I have no, uh, reservations. Like the biggest thing will be for the alcohol licensing, making sure that the parking lot is clearly marched, clearly contained, you know, no drinks beyond this point type of stuff. And that we're not walking the trail with wine and, and stuff like that. But, um, I have no issues with this, this event. I appreciate the effort on keeping it off of Highway one and First Street both as well.
I already purchased the signs and, um, I actually already purchased my special event dream shop as approved because anyway, it was quite the process. I kind of had to split the money. So dream shop is approved. If you guys approve it, then they will approve it at the end.
And here's the idea, how many people might that is from?
So up, up to five hundred participants. Um, we have, we are providing a glass of wine at our cost. That's the agreement we have with the committee. And then they donate money back to a nonprofit as well in our community. Um, so all in all, I think it's a fair enough to me. I'm gonna, you know, obviously advertise where they can watch, where they can stay, where they can shop. So.
We'll also be working. Yep. We'll, we'll also be working with her on, on the attendance for that. And if we need to have officers present at the event for the alcohol and the music portion of that, this for security purposes, we'll deal with that as, as we get closer to the event.
Question I asked, I think we have more than five minutes.
I would move approval of, uh, in support of what's needed for the wine run.
I have a second.
Could be another customer.
I do like that it's different. I mean, the, the pool does, they'll try, but and then, and then there's this word of American States, it's a five K in the morning, I think. But that is a unique deal, unlike that. So thank you.
That one made before this?
Yeah, it's American States in that as well.
The week before, yeah.
Any other questions or discussion? Motion for approval of the wine run five K and scheduled for July fifteen, all favor that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Going on to reports, search reservation, any report? Got Suzette Aspily here and, uh. Want to, introduce yourself here.
So first I would, I'm Su Aspily. I live in the Ash Park Historic District, close to Stephanie, actually. Um, and I'd just like to thank the commission for their support of Mount Vernon's historic architecture. Um, it's really an important part of our town and we appreciate your support in so many ways. Um, one of the big things for us this year is kind of obviously Rogers isn't here. Um, Mia Rogers has been chair of the commission for about the past ten years. Um, I haven't gone fully through all the past minutes yet. I'm sort of kind of familiarizing myself with things, but I think she is one of the founders of the commission. So, um, it's a big change for us and a really big shift for us. So fortunately she has stayed on the commission and she's continued to be active on the commission. Um, so that's really great for us. She contributes to every meeting. Um, we have another membership question come up this year. We have a twelve year old applying the open position on the commission. Edith Dawson, our local celebrity applied to be a commissioner, turned in a fabulous application, made those most of our commissions feel a little bit. She made her own applications, but, um, we have legal responsibilities as a commission and we didn't really feel that she was of an age that she could take those on. She's very graciously accepted a friend of the commission status, which doesn't legally obligate her, but she's kind of all her name. She's working on our archives. She has fabulous questions about things. I mean, she's just really a great part of the commission. So we really consider her a member and she functions as a member, even though she doesn't have the same legal responsibilities that we do. Um, one thing I might mention, uh, one of these recent accomplishments is that, um, she was really instrumental in getting eleven brick houses on the National Register of Historic Places in twenty twenty. Um, that was really a big, it was a goal of the commission for quite a while and she, she made sure they could happen. Um, as you know, we do desire reviews. Anytime someone in the Historic District makes an exterior change in their structure or adds a fence or, or adds a building, we review those. Um, one of the issues we had for a while was that, um, people weren't aware that they needed to do that. A former commissioner, Michelle Palke, introduced a newsletter that went out in the Historic Districts for a while. She left the commission, but we've re-instituted because we found it really helpful that people don't just get a surprise when they go to the package building permit, say, now you have to go before historic preservation. But I think that's been good. I've talked to some past commissioners who found that, um, people were sometimes hostile when they came before the commission. We have not had that in the last several years at all. In fact, they seem pretty grateful. They, they come here because they like the historic architecture. They moved into the district for that reason. And I think it's been, it's been helpful for us. We've been able to do this in spite of COVID restrictions on Zoom, but I think it's worked pretty well. We're, we now are required to be back in person, uh, for a quorum. Um, and that's working out okay, too. We, we've been in, uh, used to be the, the council chambers. Um, and, uh, we've been able to space there pretty well. Um, we really want to support, uh, preservation restoration of the visitor's center. That's been one of our roles for a few years. We're really appreciative that the commission gave some funding to do a preservation plan for that structure. So we did a little into perspective and see what needed to be done. Um, that preservation plan helped us get a four thousand dollar grant this past year to replace the front window to its original appearance. Um, we really want to continue to support the city, uh, with ready, getting, if we can. When the city has funds to put into it, we'd like to help, um, with additional funds for that. To that end, we would like to be, have it on the National Register of Visitor Center. Because it was moved in after the Historic District was formed, it's not currently a contributing structure. Um, and so we're currently, we actually passed the first hurdle in getting it on the National Register. The state Historic Preservation Office has approved it just last week. Now it goes on to another body of the state, one of the, to the National Traffic Service for approval. But we're pretty confident that this process will happen and we can get it on the National Register. Um, another goal of ours has been to, uh, to do some work in the cemetery. There are lots of stones that are pushed over, lots of stones go in that lot, but there are still some broken.
One is too big.
No, it's too big. Yeah. And especially, so those are veterans' graves and we, we do not want to have that disrespect. So the first step, and again, this is something that me facilitated, it was, uh, doing an assessment of the cemetery. So how many stones are broken and what kind of, how much would it cost to, to have them repaired? Um, and so we did this last fall. Two of our members identified all the graves of veterans. Um, so those might be our priorities. So we've been talking for a couple of years with the local V and W post about partnering with us on this. They actually have some funds available. Um, and so we, we need to really figure out, is there a mechanism by which we can put those funds to work in repairing, uh, repairing that stone? Um, we, um, another of our purposes is just to educate the community about Mount Vernon's history and especially the built environment. I mentioned the newsletter before. We have a website, it's on the page that are kept up. Um, and I'd like to give thanks to Marshall Dool for, um, helping us get our newsletter out to everyone in Mount Vernon. So previously it went out only to the Historic Districts. She suggested that we could maybe send it with a Mount Vernon newsletter. And that's happened last fall and it happened this spring. And I think that's really helpful because the city supports us. It's an important part of what Mount Vernon is. And so we want to make sure that everybody in Mount Vernon knows about what we're doing and what they, how they, they might get involved. Um, we were only able to do one educational workshop this fall because of the weather. We had tourists, uh, walking tourists go to the thunderstorm twice. Um, and, uh, because of COVID, we had to cancel our second educational forum. Um, I guess the last thing is that we have a plan in work. So, uh, Mary Evans had a brilliant idea of commissioning a sesquicentennial play for Mount Vernon. Um, she approached Amy White about it. Amy and Joe are actually kind of the final stages of a sesquicentennial play. Unfortunately, our local theater company has kind of looked up and in the end, so it probably won't be done. There's full form this year, but we're hoping that they might be interested in doing it next year. So, um, do you have any questions for me about sesquicentennial?
Now, just a comment. I look forward to the newsletter every time I get it. Good. The website is wonderful. Great pictures. It's just really kind of look at.
Yeah, it's something that the commission developed over time and Mary Evans is now one of our advisors. She did a good job.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I've been involved in this type of activity for a long time and the, uh, Historic Preservation Commission is one of those commissions that oftentimes is on the, the same demand of the lifestyle, um, but is, uh, underappreciated for all the work that, that you and other commissioners do in, in really helping our community retain its identity, um, where those opportunities exist. And so I'm glad to hear that you're looking at, thinking of getting, uh, the visitor's center on the Historic Registry. I didn't realize it wasn't, um, after all these years. You'd think I would have known that. That would slip by me. So I, I, I appreciate it.
I'll pay for your comments to my colleagues. Appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Council members think about, there is a one opening still on the, on the commission at this moment. So anybody that you know that might have an interest in that, members in that group, that's, uh.
Someone over twenty one, please.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for, in, finding a way to engage the youth.
Yes.
What a wonderful thing you've done. Thank you.
That was, she's really wonderful. Thanks. Thank you.
Chief Shannon, annual police report. We saw that attachment. Do you have any?
Just to touch on it briefly, um, we strive obviously with the change and the merger this last year. Um, this year we took the opportunity and updated or revamped our format for the police, the annual police report and really strive to, um, give a true focus of what's going on in our, in our community, which includes two cities for us, uh, from that standpoint. And, uh, it's, it's, it's not a shock that, you know, when, when crime is going on or things are occurring, it's occurring in both of our communities alike. Most people don't know, uh, where the city limits stop and, and on that side of town and stuff like that, too. So we really strive to, uh, put it together. I want to publicly put out, um, a huge thank you to Tasha. Um, Tasha spent a lot of time kind of scouring the internet, looking at, um, some updated formats and kind of going through, we, we worked directly with her in coming up with this and trying to present to the public, um, you know, what we're doing on an annual basis and, and kind of some of the issues that we confront and, and see from that standpoint. So as you guys look through this, as council looks through this, if there's, um, something that you see that you'd like to see included, um, shoot me an email, anything from there. If you have questions about any of it, that we're proud to present it. Um, the first annual combined annual police report, uh, for City Lisbon and Mount Vernon.
Does this get attached to the website initially?
It should be on the website. Um, I know it's posted in Lisbon. They'll have it on their website as well, um, as it goes through. So yeah, usually the annual report sits there, I think, most of the year. Um, and then they'll try to throw the monthly reports on there as well.
Any questions? How much would you share?
I thought it was incredible. Uh, I, I appreciated the breakout. I think it, uh, it's important that the community see, uh, what's the same, what's different. Um, and, uh, I, I was wondering, you did, because it was incredible.
Thank you.
Give Tasha my.
Yes.
Yes.
I should have done that a lot.
I helped a little, a lot. It's just good to have Tasha.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't necessarily expect my chief police to be, uh, that good at PowerPoint.
I can do a PowerPoint, but it's just nice to have the time.
Right. Moving on to discussion, I have future stepping plans. Who's the pool discussions? Mr. Chris.
Um, probably a misnomer that it's a discussion item. I'll start with the pool just because of, uh, the email I sent earlier today about, uh, five years ago, I was with the personnel committee, um, then Paul actually sat on that, you know, at the very beginning. We had a brilliant plan to put a starting wage out there with an annual increase if they came back and where they were going to top out. And that lasted two years. Um, it's been sensible apart. Um, it's kind of a running joke. Marshall asked me, what are we doing to season employees? And I said, well, we're going to leave when we're trying to fill all the positions. And so what's going to happen in, in the pool likely this year is we will have, typically we have two assistant managers that worked under Katie and then a host of head lifeguards who help man the odd hours that the pool has. We'll likely have one assistant manager to pay, pay higher than, uh, what we would have expected, you know, pre-COVID, I guess. Uh, and then we'll rely on head lifeguards. Far around the subject of the pool, we're going to be doing small renovations to try and get that office back in order. Um, a few health concerns with what they were finding. There's carpet. To have, got figured out why there's carpet at the pool, that there was carpets or ripping all that out, uh, and tearing off some of the, the walls, um, and nothing too major that we can't put back together. But, uh, I, I tell the council this because wages five years ago were in the eight dollar range. Um, last year they were in the eleven dollar range and this year we could be closer to twelve or thirteen. I really don't know yet. Um, that is just the world that we're living in right now. Um, and trying to find labor just to keep operations moving forward. Uh, and then that has a trickle down, a trickle off effect, you would say, is, um, we have Jane and we have other season employees that come over and, and so can't pay them unless they're paying somebody to, to work at a concession stand at, at the pool. So costs have, uh, they haven't doubled. They've increased drastically with the past couple of years. Um, thankfully we've been able to resort to those costs without adding to the tax rate. Thankfully, we've been able to absorb those costs without adding to the tax rate, which is always nice. Two, a recommendation from the Personnel Committee here, from me to the Personnel Committee, is that we sit down and start having conversations with our current officer staff on the PD. Again, talking about having a trickle up effect. I have one union, two bargaining units represented by the same union. So what tends to occur is one is going to have, you know, long lasting changes to the rest of the PD. We were a participant in a Grinnell salary study that I shared with Personnel Committee. And it shows that, you know, in some regards, we are doing fine in the salary ranges that we have and others are doing well. So overall, this is my kind of shot across the bow to say, we will be seeing changes from a wage standpoint. And again, I make this statement all the time. It's not my intent to bring you recommendations that get us in the realms of a CDR, a high wobbles of the world. I know that we can't compete. However, the goal should be to make it close enough that it's enticing to stay here versus taking one of those other positions. I think if I went back for a minute, I could find the prediction that I made when the state made changes to the collective bargaining law and I said it was going to have unintended consequences and it has. Those that can pay or offer a lot of incentives are doing such, much to the detriment of the other communities that can't. We're fortunate enough that we can probably dabble, we're not going to be able to match. But there are things being thrown around today that I would never have predicted 20 years ago. There are sign-on bonuses, large sign-on bonuses for certifications. Communities are paying health insurance, are giving health insurance credits after they retire until they reach Medicare, Medicaid. We're just in a different ballgame as far as staffing meets. If you look at our two contracts and the fact that our staff reaches their maximum in five years, you can tell that when those contracts were first formed, it was all about the knowledge that after five years, we're probably going to lose them. Thankfully, we've been lucky enough to hang on to employees much longer than five years. And now we're with the conundrum that those employees maxed out, you know, in some instances, 15 years here. So I don't know what that looks like quite yet. I just want to sit down and have the ability to sit down with my staff and have conversations. I'm not advocating that we leave open contracts, we still have another year. However, if there are points that we can come together on, that, you know, that might be considered in the near future. And finally, I'm not going to elaborate, I'm not making any announcements. But I am going to tell you that I will have some statuums at the department level. It's not my place to necessarily make any announcements, but it's not necessarily overnight, it won't be until the end of this year. But I did share with the Personnel Committee that I want to take advantage of some of these potential changes and kind of write some things that I've, you know, had some concerns with as far as position titles and. We're not going to probably net gain employees. It will become a little bit more expensive with that plan moving forward. There's going to be more to that to come in the, you know, the next month or so. The end of the year seems like a long time away, but as of the last six years, it's going really, really fast. So I've thrown a lot at you in a short period of time. I just kind of wanted to give you a synopsis of what my conversation was with the Personnel Committee. Tom, Paul, Stephanie were all at those meetings. So if you want to have conversations with them about their take on any of those points, I welcome that. So it's nice to get their take versus just hearing me speak. So in the meantime, I'm going to move forward with some of these conversations and discussions and prepare for a year that wasn't necessarily expecting, but we'll manage to get through.
You know, Katie was just doing interviews with the pool. Are you going to be able to maintain hours, like typical opening time, closing time, and hours service, staffing, the other end? Yeah, a little removed from you.
And we're going to hold you to whatever you say, right?
Right, so it will be pretty silent. No, so a lot of the pool hours are going to be established based on the administration we have in place. I think lifter allies at the lower level would be fine, it's the administrative, the assistant managers and then lifter positions are our hardest ones to fill. We have plenty of high school kids, but we don't have a lot of college age or older kids that need, you know, supervisor roles. So that's what we're discovering is it's, Katie cannot work more than X number of hours, right? So those individuals have to fill in and usually it's been three people that fill that. And right now, we're showing a little bit to fill that, so. I, I hope we don't have to reduce any hours in regards to based on staffing. Our goal is to try our best that we can to make sure we have enough individuals in place to stay open to the hours that are established.
Big enough. Any questions about, Chris, about staffing?
I would, I would just say that as, from a liability perspective, I would prefer cutting hours and being staffed appropriately rather than trying to
spread it to.
Get just enough to keep it up.
Yeah, a warm body doesn't work.
Right.
It has to be a suitable, sustainable person that can administer aid, direction. You know, we're talking about letting up Kate's work at the pool, so yeah, that's our goal, absolutely.
Thank you.
Truly, you know, where we typically struggle is the last two weeks of the season. We start with some of those high school students to, to a day and other events that they have at school and then colleges are going back, so the crew gets really skeletoned those last couple of weeks. So from an adjusting hours standpoint, the expectation might be this year that that may occur. And then in a, but, you know, if we, if we open a pool without having to cut a big hole in the basin for anybody bringing any glass, that will be a win for us this year.
Thank you, mayor, heads up, I love the staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to reports, Mayor Council, they report, I mentioned two things. I'm up to the other place saying, a citizen asked that I share this with you. That person was going to be at this meeting to discuss this. That did not happen, so if you want these materials, send them back to me and take them back the next time the citizen wants to talk about it. The second thing was, I would like to know that was asked by the E-Club, the Marmot Club at Cornell to speak to their officers last Wednesday, spent an hour plus with their six officers and then another half hour later with their alpine president and incoming president. While looking at things that we can cooperate with the city and with Cornell. And I didn't get a chance to mention this, but Craig, I thought, okay, I made a bomb there, but sorry about that. But maybe they're working on was the ability to counter those with city limits. So that's, they have a lot on our plate right now, but they're not looking to do that. But that was honestly the, I didn't think I came up there. But they were pleasantly surprised by all the things we've got in the hop, you know, this, what we're doing with the damn roof and so on, with the solar panels, the two locations, some things we've got already with the past state vote committees for COVID and so on. So that was a good discussion, they saved listening. That's my report. Any council reports, anything, anybody?
I just want to make you know that I've been participating in event intern interviews with Joe, Justin. And we had three this week, we've got two more next week. And we've got some very good candidates for that position to help him over the very busy festival time period. And I will be attending with him and some other people the Iowa Dinner for Main Street Community where we're going to get a special confirmation for being the top eight for the camp, so that's April 27th.
And is the camp set out in May, I want to say?
Yes, the event in Virginia was in May. I think it's the second week, it's kind of. Yeah, May 16th, that's Monday morning.
Thanks, Beth. Do you have three reports, certain date yet for that council's meeting with signage?
Not a date specific yet, it was going to be towards the end of this month, but I want to make sure. Joe was in the hospital, so that was kind of what we decided what led to the limited numbers. We want to make sure there's plenty of time. So tentatively, at the end of this month, if we push it back into May, I just want to make sure that there's plenty of time for people to be available for that meeting.
Thank you. Any other council committee reports? The Ministers' report?
The only one that I would highlight, and I probably could have highlighted on that conversation with the employees, but health insurance costs definitely did not get helped by COVID. So my meeting on Wednesday will likely not be good news. I do want to point out though, for everybody that hasn't been here, through the number of changes we were paying for employee health insurance, the city's portion of that is about the same now than it was five years. We did a lot of maneuvering around it. I think my maneuvers are about run their course. So I've run out of things to be able to pull out of my hat, but yeah, I'll kind of preface that. So when I say anything, you can really catch up.
Thank you, Chris. Any other comments? Anything else that needs to be, we'll have later, not that we are, I'm sure.